Center Inc. for community service program in misdemeanor probation. I believe this is an annual thing we usually approve?
Yes. The charge is like forty-eight hundred dollars a year.
So it doesn't look like anything's changed from the year before that I can see.
Nope, the charge is the same as they always have.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to go with the agreement.
Commissioner Holland makes a motion to approve the agreement with Center Inc. For community service program supervision and misdemeanor probation. They're second to that motion.
Yes, second.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Agreement approved. The budget hearing will be from five thirty to six o'clock. It'll be a public hearing and from six to six fifteen we'll be adopting the budget. And the last items on the agenda.
Is the budget hearing in here?
Uh, yes. In here at five thirty.
Can we go over the page before?
Uh, let's finish the building permit section.
Gary, you want to grab these here?
Oh, I can sign those check. Did I sign these in red pen? I'm not supposed to do that.
This is something that Terry Wilson brought to my attention on a last week's meeting. Something about John Beck with the wrong legal description. Take note of that. Do you know anything about it?
No idea what that's supposed to be about.
That there is a building that they're like that. With the wrong legal description on the building permit.
I would say Josh would probably know more.
But you know anything about that?
The one for Colton?
John Colston.
John Beck.
Probably.
Well, you know what happened?
Probably one of his, is it his son or what?
Or his son.
It's his son.
Yeah.
Well, you know what happened is they, when he came and applied for that permit, he used out there by John's. I think that should go to John.
Well, yeah, everybody was telling me that they thought it was down there, but.
No, John Colton's place is out west of John's.
Yeah. He came in and drew it out for me, so the permit we had is what John came in and gave me. So he drew it out exactly where it's going and that legal is right.
But did it go there?
Huh?
Yeah.
I don't go out after tax records either.
I know John Colton's place is out.
It's several east of town, yeah. Supposedly one thirty-three seventy-seven, section fourteen.
One thirty-three seventy-seven?
Yeah.
Section what?
Fourteen.
I hope it's part of the rest of that.
This was given to me by Terry Wilson. Just checked on, I think, the wrong legal was submitted. I don't know.
Yeah, that's not where the house is.
Yeah, the house is. One thirty-three seventy-six. The, I think the agenda, on the agenda was written wrong, but the actual permit.
He's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what happened, I think. If they looked at the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was checked up on the man. One thirty-three seventy-six, section fourteen is where John Colton's place is.
Okay, I've got this still given to me by Terry.
The permit's right. It was the agenda.
It's wrong.
Just, yeah.
I messed up on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, just so that it's brought to you.
Marles, is that it?
Yeah. What?
You, you, you admit it?
I made a mistake with the agenda. I did, I tagged it wrong later.
She's human.
Yeah. Yeah. We don't tolerate mistakes in Emmons County.
I do. I make mistakes. I'm sorry, I do.
Hear about that paper.
You guys act surprised that I made a mistake. My gosh, I make lots of mistakes. I just don't tell you about them.
We just want to see, we just want to see you cry, Marcy. That's all we want.
Oh, I won't cry.
Don't be so sure. Okay, so we have a building permit for Robert C. Hefford to add thirty-two by thirty-four point six addition to the house on south half last nine point seven six acres, right? RW side. Section four, township one thirty-two, range seventy-eight. Range seventy-eight.
I hope it's right.
Yeah, setback's good. Attention to the east side of the house there.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Holland makes a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Maitery. Is there any more discussion? I would be abstaining due to a conflict of interest. Is there any more discussion on building permit for Bob Wetter? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye and opposed. Permit approved. Next is the tax abatement for parcel three zero dash zero 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 dash zero four one seven six dash zero four three, tax year twenty twenty-four.
Trying to remember what the reason for that means. You should have.
Ever Bay Scenic Properties.
On the bottom, you should state a reason.
Qualifies for a hundred percent HC credit on the home state credit.
Qualified for home state credit then.
So that's an abatement for home state credit.
Yeah.
Charles qualifications comes through the state, so. You can deny it technically, but.
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Everly makes a motion to approve tax payment for said parcel for the year twenty twenty-four. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Payment approved. Next will be change of date for the November commission meeting due to election day.
When's election?
Election is.
The fifth.
The fifth, which is Commissioner Day. We'd be fine to just move it a, or no, that's right. We don't want to move it a week, right? Because bills really. You want it later in the week, just like a day or two?
What about Thursday the seventh?
Thursday, April seventh?
No.
I mean, you want it before, I mean, when they take over, if it, after the election, when the new ones take over in November then?
No, December.
Oh, no matter what?
Yep.
Oh, okay, okay.
So even after the election, you're still scheduled one more week. We got one more month.
You can't get out of it, Gary.
Nope, not yet. And any subsequent special meetings afterwards, you are subject to attend. Not subject. Bandied.
Even the seventh or eighth would work because.
Well, the eighth is, is that deer opener or is it the first?
Yep.
Friday, the eighth.
Bad luck to have deer, bad luck to have anything on deer opener. Everybody knows that. So you gotta do the seventh. Deer openers.
Was that Monday were closed because of veterans? Tuesday we didn't kind of.
Holy hell, Monday they're closed, yeah. Yeah, a week is a long time, so.
So November seventh would be perfect.
Probably the seventh, because yeah, the day after the election is going to be pretty hectic too.
Right. November seventh.
November seventh. It's nine AM. Eighth is deer hunting. I don't have a tape, but I still, I still observe the holiday.
November seventh at nine?
We have a motion to move the commissioner's date to November seventh at nine AM.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Everly makes a motion and guarantees his attendance on November seventh at nine AM. Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Miller. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting is moved to November seventh at nine AM. Building permit for CHS Incorporated for addition of one point six million bushel covered ground pile storage and receiving pit. Section twenty-seven, township one thirty-one, range seventy-six. Is this the one just on the west side of Stroudberg?
Yep.
Good. Right, northwest.
Stepbacks will be good. They're running it parallel to the one that's already there, so everything looks fine in my view.
That road gets so beat up. That road gets so beat up with all that freight. It should be heavy, heavy tar going in.
Will I entertain a motion to approve table or deny the building permit for CHS?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Commissioner Maitery makes a motion to approve. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holland. Is there any more discussion on the covered ground pile storage and receiving pit for CHS? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Permit approved. Next will be building permit for Jay Bren for moving a thirty-two by twenty-eight pole barn onto a property for cold storage. Triangle tract in the northwest quarter. Section twenty-nine, township one thirty-three, range seventy-six.
Where's that at?
On the west side of the road, highway, right?
Yeah.
Cross from Clint High, I guess.
Like Clint's on the east side.
Like Clint's?
Straight to.
Oh, okay, yep, yep, the old Niski place there, whatever.
There's a cool valley.
Whereabouts from, from that trailer we're at?
Right on the south side.
Southwest of the trailer.
Yes.
Southwest of it.
So it's far enough from the sex line and far enough off the highway.
I thought they were selling that place.
They is, this is.
This guy bought it, he can do it.
Someone wants to put a building there. No idea. Good, Terry?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Holland makes a motion to approve building permit for Jay Bren to move a thirty-two by twenty-eight pole barn on the said property. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Commissioner Maitery. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Building permit approved. Last part of old and unfinished business was Commissioner Miller wanted to discuss measure four. I will warn you that as a board, we cannot advocate your specific ballot measure, so. You have indeed been warned. Go ahead.
I'm just wondering what our plan is if it passes and what it is if we don't. Because we don't have any idea what the legislature is going to to pass, if it does pass, because they have to write the law, so. Is it just a wait and see deal?
I would imagine. I would have to say that there are some specifics in the measure and after reading the measure, anything that's not specific is probably going to have to get sorted out by the legislature, so. But there are upcoming legislation, legislative session coming up here in twenty twenty-five, I would imagine if the measure passes, a bulk of that measure is going to be sorting out how to handle it.
Right.
I don't know, because there are specific information that I've been given about it is there are specific points that they just, they couldn't put everything in the measure, so apparently a part of the plan is if the measure passes, there are several bills that need to kind of be crafted to clear up certain parts. I don't I don't have any details specifically, but some of it has to do with like centrally assessed property, like wind towers, pipeline, stuff like that. I think there's some.
So that wouldn't go into effect until twenty-five?
I believe so.
Right.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, yeah.
Does anybody out there know anything about it or anything?
What's measure two?
Measure four. I thought you said measure two, you were talking about me and four.
I don't know really much about other than.
What's measure two, Marles?
Is that the one with the legacy?
I don't know. Somebody asked me that. Well, yeah, you're not sure what measure two consists of.
There's. No, I didn't. Measure two is about.
I think there's five measures.
What is it?
The constitution where it's going to take more signatures to get. Something on the ballot.
Oh, right.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's what that entails.
And then I think three is something with the legacy fund.
Yes, I think you're right.
And then four is the tax manor.
Five is tax reform.
Five is the marijuana.
Marijuana do.
Oh.
Do you have information on measure four if the commission is interested? We printed out some things, just information, general information on measure four.
Okay.
And what it's about.
Okay.
So if the commission.
Can we have that again? Right now?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, I got a question, a couple of questions. I made you there. I made one for Marles.
Yeah, go ahead. I only want to do the bills, so we got somebody here.
I just got a. I'm sure you guys can answer this. I just got a question on. Right now, does the state mandate every year our taxes go up a certain amount and what is that amount, a percentage?
The value?
Well, I mean, do they just say like it's got to go up three percent every year or?
Vacuations, we got the same mandates based on sales and stuff like that.
And we got to stay within that certain percentage.
So they have.
We have to stay compliant with the value.
They have a guideline, I think, that we have to comply by, right?
Yeah, we have to stay within a certain percentage, ninety, within ninety percent of our places.
It's based off a market value?
So you have to do that no matter what, even if the commissioners. So measure four would cure that, I guess. And then I guess I'm just gonna make a statement here that, and this isn't against you guys or anybody, but the taxes are getting high enough and I understand we're all under high inflation, but these tax sale you were talking about earlier, you might have to have, in my opinion, that's going to go up because the tax levels now are getting to the point where you're starting to hurt people. Whether that's farmers or whether it's people in the city. Anyway, it's getting up there. I never thought I'd see this high taxes. And it's not your fault. I'm just saying that measure four, if you look at, when you guys get home tonight, you look at what I handed out to you, see that's just part of the wasteful spending and that came right from our state budget. And you see what they're wasting in money. You know, it'd be better spent by the county here, the people in the county. Because I think it would create, you know, you give me extra ten, fifteen thousand, I'm going to blow it on something and it's going to create sales tax. So I just, I think we're getting at a level that's going to really be bad in the future. Because it's going to just keep going up and if inflation goes down, are they going to lower the taxes? Well, that never happens. And so.
And I, I think too, are you done?
No, I'll go ahead. I'll think of something.
Okay, okay. Just one thing that seems to be kind of miscommunicated is that, you know, we're hearing from our citizens that we're going to be losing money. You know, Emmons County is going to be losing money in their schools and emergency response hospitals and all of that and, you know, that, that isn't true. The, the measure actually states that the, the state will replace every dollar. Everything that was assessed to us in twenty twenty-four will be sent back to Emmons County in twenty twenty-five out of the state coffers. And so Emmons County shouldn't be without any revenue at all and that's forever. That doesn't end.
It is forever, doesn't it?
It's forever, right, right.
But it stays, stays the rate that it was that year.
Correct. Correct. And at that point, if in the years to come, as inflation grows and if the, the county feels the need to have to raise more funds through taxes or fees, then they would come to, could come to the citizens and work out, you know, something that would be manageable and understand, you know, a little easier to understand for all all of the, you know, patrons of Emmons. And, you know, we would hope that, you know, when that day comes, you know, all of the property owners that have had a little reprieve from their tax burden would be willing to work with our commission. If you come to us and say, you know, we, we, we need to generate a little more revenue because we do have roads or we do have things in our community that are a necessity that we need to improve upon, I think, you know, we landowners would be receptive to that. I would hope we would be.
Well, it's just like when they were complaining about gravel in the road, you guys said, well, we need more money and nobody argues that point at all. You know, so I think in the future, like she's saying, over and above what the state sends down, if you guys needed a local tax of five percent or something like that on our acreage, you know, and you had a good reason why, I don't see the people in the county saying no to you. It'd just be more transparent, you know.
Do you know if a county could start up sales tax like a half?
I don't know that.
First hundred dollars they spend?
I, I think it needs tweaking if it passes, like Aaron was saying, but you know, I think it's so broken right now, we've got to try something different. It's been this way forever and it's just, you're going to break people sooner or later.
Well, that's what they're doing. They're taxing more and more all the time and it's just like, how can, how can you sustain it, you know?
Right, and we're seeing at our state level, and, and I think that's in some of the information that I presented and there's, anybody that wants more information can go to www.inpropertytax.com or to the Secretary of State's website with all of the information on the, the assets that the state has, all of our funds. And I think it's kind of laid out in there that the state can afford to do this. You know, we're sitting, we're a very rich state and the Lord's blessed us richly and, and so for the state to have to share some of that with its citizens isn't going to be a burden and I think that's another thing that's misrepresented is that it's going to be a burden on our state. And if you just go through and do a little homework, it's, it's not going to be a burden. But of course, you know, I get it. Some of the legislators want to keep their money. They want to keep that fund, those slush funds around to be able to kind of manage their projects and, and, but, you know, is, is that worth denying? You know, the taxpayers a little bit of reprieve? So I would just ask that, you know, US commissioners would do your homework and research. I probably didn't give you anything that you don't already know, but just, you know, so that you're informed when it comes time, you know, to vote. I guess it was our intention.
So I got a question to Josh. So like when we, or Marcy, whoever. So like this last land up at Hazleton went for seventy-five hundred an acre. So do they throw out the high and the low when they make an average or how does that work?
It doesn't work on ag land. Ag land is based on yield. The NDSU comes up with a value per acre. And then I map all the soils that are on your land and it's taxed appropriately. If you have good soils, your tax higher than those that have.
So the land sales have nothing to do with our town?
Unless there's a home on it and they had a taxable value, you know, your city properties and homes, ag land.
And then I only got one more question here, because we got the school land lease sale tomorrow. Does any of that come to our county here? Or does it go to the school boards or where is that?
A very, very, very small amount of any. Most of it goes to the North Dakota School Lands Trust Fund.
Schools, which I think's got eight billion in it or something, I heard.
And I don't even think all that money ends up at the schools like it's. I don't want to say it's supposed to, like they're breaking a lot, but it's not the way the law described it and the way it's being funded, because there's even an issue with that as far as. I mean, that, that school lands trust fund is.
That's why I say it's totally broken.
You know, that, a lot, I'm basically from the way I was described or explained to it is that initially there was two full sections in each township. Usually it's sixteen and thirty-two. Sixteen and thirty-six. And a lot of them are, there's a lot of it's grass, you know, a lot, a lot of pasture ground, but yeah, that school auction, when you go and bid on that land, that land was supposed to go to the schools in that district and it doesn't. It goes to this fund and then it gets trickled down through whatever processes, policies and calculations that they have.
It's supposed to help lower taxes.
Exactly. It was supposed to be, it was, it was state land granted to the schools to help pay for your local school districts. And if you really think about the amount of land that's in each school district, if that money went in, that would be a huge help, but it gets centralized through a fund and it kind of piggybacks to my nine-one-one thing. I know it's a small amount, but we're always centralizing authority to these other programs, funds and non-government entities. They're appointed, not elected. And then we have these issues where later we're like, where's all this money? Where are all these services? Well, let's take it back. Well, you can't, you did that. I know a nine-one-one thing is a small drop in the bucket, but it's a, it's a microchasm of the same scenario with school lines and everything. It's more efficient to put it in one fund and it's more efficient to have these five people manage it than all these school boards, but you take away that authority, it's the death of a thousand cuts and so.
But that's why they want their pet projects. They want to control this money.
Well. Any, any entity that has a surplus of money usually becomes a problem. That's kind of, it doesn't matter if it's like fishing wildlife or anyway, as soon as they get money and then people start coming up with ideas to spend it and so.
Well, I just think people need to do their homework before the election here and, you know, see how, what they can understand on this, because I, me personally, I think it's a good thing because it's going to correct some of the corruption and everything that's going on. All right, well, thank you.
Well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thanks for your time.
I wonder what most of people think about that, or know about that.
What is the feeling out there amongst the general public from what you can comprehend?
I'm hearing everything from both ways.
Yeah, same ways.
But most people don't take the time to look up the website or watch Beck TV, you know, they've had Becker and this other guy were on opposition, you know, going back and forth. And the opposition guy actually agreed with Becker on a lot of stuff. Not everything, but, so people just aren't paying attention.
So you can go on Beck TV and pull it up. You'll see the debate. Just go to becknews, I think, dot com and you can watch the debate.
It's on open range on Beck TV.
Yeah, that's right. And it's very informative. I mean, yeah.
And you can watch it on your phone. You can watch it on TV, computer. People just aren't paying attention. So they, the scare tactic is no money's coming to Emmons County. I mean, they make it sound like zero and that's a lie.
And they have more money than, than us.
You add.
Than us citizens and the landowners. You know, that ad campaign, they're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars.
When you add up that sheet I gave you, add up those figures on there once and you'll see how much money and that's just a small percentage, so. It isn't perfect, but it's better than where we are now, in my opinion, so.
Great, we want to switch spots.
I think it's supposed to.
They had, right?
Not good. They had no rain. I can't imagine going into deep freeze with the moisture. Yeah, not good.
Well, there won't be much of a freeze without moisture. Yeah, it won't go very deep. It's dry. Yeah, red flag warning issued.
It is issued.
Until seven PM because it looks like we have wind gusts of fifteen to twenty. But it looks like according to this, by about eight PM it's dying down, so we have seven, eight o'clock and this winds are dying down, but then it looks like Friday and Saturday windy.
Windy event, correct?
That's what it looks like.
Yep. It's not good, guys.
Pack up into the eighties next week too?
Yeah.
In October?
It's Sunday, ninety-nine degrees. A hundred and two dollar rapid city.
And dry though.
Yeah.
We can just. We got.
It's with all the flies.
There's guys down the south. They will not come.
It's with them.
Oh, really? This wind and dry.
Well, in September, we got.
We're staying out of the field.
Shouldn't really. We got a dose of Florida and Arizona the same month. Oh, is that what happened there?
I guess. Yeah, you hit a rock and it's going to work, you know, you hit a rock.
Well, that's why when I, when I got a call from a couple of them guys about the ditch mower and they're just like, I'm not doing it. And I'm like, well. And it was all the day after that big Hazleton fire. It's like, yeah, I don't want to be the next guy starting.
I looked at it, I did. You said they're, they're cut.
Yeah.
But there's some grass that got it. We're one coming up. I said it should be cool.
Right, I got a stretch for like a hundred feet where the alfalfa's really thick on the corner and then the rest of it's fine, but you guys should just go hit the whole thing, but I'm not going to go out and throw a spark or, you know, especially in that wind.
Check it out. Just let it, they want to find me, so be it, you know?
Well. It's going to be so brittle. If the blade would hit it, it's probably going to disintegrate right now. It's pretty dry out there. It's pretty ugly.
You get up to Bismarck, it's green. There it's decent because they had that four inches of rain and they had an inch and a half before that.
Well, even once you get around Wishick, they had that little shot there like two weeks ago. It's not as bad, but between Wishick and the rivers.
Yeah.
Pretty dry.
What's power plant in court? Would that just.
It's.
There's a payment for rope, is it?
It's power plant in court out of Chicago.
That's payments for John Deere motor graders?
How much is it?
Thirty-nine, about four grand.
Four grand? No, it's, it's a, it's for some parts and stuff. It's a company that another company uses for their billing. That's for parts that they pick up.
I want to say power plant is John Deere.
It's probably there.
I, I think that's.
But it's not for equipment leasing. It's more like parts and stuff like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that everyone. It wasn't as cold in here today as it usually is, John, did you turn it on? It's not that cold, I didn't even need it. Yes, somebody out there did.
Oh, okay. I've got much of a grievance since.
I'm like twenty-four.
Twenty-three thou, oh, we're near.
Almost twenty-four.
Or so far.
Four even since.
Oh, really?
That's right, twenty to twenty-five.
I didn't think it was that far down.
That sounds great.
That's, but you can't, you guys.
I know, but look, I know what he's had to sell to pay that, I mean, they don't, he'd sell everything he had there, he wouldn't have enough money to pay that. You know what I mean?
Stupid. Cause I've known him for a year.
Nice guy.
Gold bean trucks for his uncle in his town.
He's a nice guy.
So what happens if you can't pay that?
We sent a bill right away after they were done and we sent another bill here again in September. And I asked Joe to look into it, see if I could put it on his taxes, which he doesn't pay November first, so he hasn't gotten back to me, I'm hoping I can, that's what I'm gonna do.
What are you gonna do? You're gonna get that house. I'm gonna be here. Charles Tony must have grass. Kelvin bushes.
Kelvin brushes, no. You guys did agree to do that approach for that tricycle cemetery for.
Oh, yeah, did he do that?
Yeah.
Kelvin, did he bother to drill for that?
Yeah.
That's done.
Yeah, I think he actually built the approach.
Okay. Cause I think Ross was gonna do it, then he did that time, that whole deal. So they said, okay.
And we agreed just to give them two thousand dollars and I think I'm thinking of tricycle cemetery, I think it's the number of dollars.
Okay, let's see, what's your current?
Until Robin's back, I hope.
Okay.
And then she come and have.
She's here today, she started today.
And the other one, we insured, you know. The other gal that's in. She's, her husband Jordan, C H S.
I don't know if she's still good, I don't think so. Yeah, but she's still working, you know, I didn't, I didn't. That'll be most clean. That'll be most clean, you didn't.
No, now that she's cool.
Oh, okay, okay.
No, no. Is Mary Paul here?
She, no, well, she tried to come, wants to try to come. She does a lot of her work from her, from home, from her office up there.
Is the bill here from what's in HR?
No.
Do you hear anything from her? What would we have to do to pursue her and speak to her and negotiate a deal, what would we have to do?
Do you what?
You want me to ask her if she's interested and she can probably come and talk to you.
What she has to offer, what she has to offer, what she wants or she.
I thought, I thought, is she gonna come on board, we'll put in office.
No, that was just for the.
That was just for that interview.
Oh, I thought she was gonna run.
She considered, she said, I think she's trying to hire someone, I think she had to make that point.
I'll ask.
Cause she's getting so ready to what she can do.
Yeah, we should have an HR person.
You're so open to wrongs, I don't give a darn who you are. You always had one before, didn't you?
No.
Wasn't Pam Bider always here?
No, it's just for a year or so, right?
Yeah, a year or two.
Wasn't very long.
Before you had nobody, never, never.
Never.
Marles was the HR person.
Yeah, right.
Mark?
See, that's wrong, you.
Now did you have?
You should have.
Yeah, it did fall on you a lot of times, they're modest, pretty much.
You come and complain about this person, that person. Shake it off, get along.
Should be a bartender, right?
Huh?
Should be a bartender.
They can't do it, they just can't do it alone. There's always that big. Life's too short.
That's right.
Life's too short. You're all gonna get your ticket. No matter how perfect you think you are, you're all gonna get one, ever once.
So what's Karen working again, somewhere or what?
Well, she was helping out when Robin was on the Trinity League here.
I thought she had the other gal there.
She work?
Yeah.
She does.
They're all busy. They're busy. She's working. They're busy. There's enough work to do. Karen's hard work, he's part-time. I don't think John's working anymore, is he John T? His back, I think he's bad. I think he's done. Am I right?
John?
John T was, he's no longer working, is he?
I don't think he does.
I think his back is so bad, he can't do it anymore, he wants to, he can't. I think, I don't think he's on board. Just Dennis.
I don't think he helped too much this year, I think.
Because he's at that meeting here and I thought that he was on board.
He just helps out every once in a while.
Yeah, and his kid.
Yeah, his kid too, I don't know what his kid does now.
I'm gonna push that in, it looks like it's coming out, push that in.
What's that?
In the description, I was in there.
Yeah, that is my shake and adjustment.
No big deal. He just asked me to check on it, it was.
Oh.
And there it not.
Well, it's nice that people are into reading and watching.
Yeah, they do.
That's good. So we're just gonna recess till five thirty, right?
Mm-hmm.
We adjourn a meeting though now?
No, it just goes into recess.
Oh, you just put it to recess?
Yep. Just take a four hour.
Are you in recess, all right? Uh, are we in recess? I don't know, I'm recording now, you guys.
Well, what's that means is if the bills, if the bills are concluded, then, um, we stand in recess until five thirty, where the, be right here with the public hearing. And it's on the agenda for five thirty, right?
Yep.
Five thirty.
And how long is that?
Five thirty to six and then six to six fifteen are the agenda items or the budget, so come ready to rock. With that, this meeting is in recess.